On the day, at seven P M. Start with the public. Public agents that might in the United States of America. Is the comment of which stands on nation under that invisible.
Please do the welcome.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Montoya.
Here.
Alderman Ruthenberg.
Here.
Alderman Fairwell.
Here.
Alderman McGee.
Here.
Alderman Carr.
Here.
Alderman Roll.
Here.
Seven for the honor.
Public comment as a reminder of the public comment period is not a time for dialogue. The purpose of the public comment period is for the mayor and all of the city to receive input from their community. It is in fact a one way communication to city council. The city's administration and department head are available for discussions after the meeting. Is there any public comment?
Hello, good evening. My name is Marilu Atenpa. I am from the United Worker Senate, nonpartisan organization on the southeast side of Chicago. We just began our after school program here in Blue Island this month of October. And we were just here just to pass that information along to you. Our after school program has cooking and baking arts and soccer. On Wednesdays once a week. The sheets that I provided for you guys have a registration code on there if you need any more information. Our contact info is also at the bottom. Our office is open Monday through Friday and we invite you guys to call if you need any information. It's a really great program. All the children receive a meal before beginning the program. And they're very well taken care of. And then you guys also have a sheet with the other programs and resources that we offer at our. Or at our organization. One of them is a free medical clinic that we bring over to Blue Island once, once every two weeks. So that's also a really great resource if you guys would like to take advantage. And once you're going to be have any questions, please give us a call. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Now moving on. Motion for an immediate approval payable date October twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, amount of five hundred three thousand four hundred sixty four dollars and five cents is their motion. Most of all, the cars, most of all, and fair and well on the question. But please do the roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Hi.
Alderman Montoya.
Hi.
Alderman Ruthenberg.
Hi.
Alderman Fairwell.
Hi.
Alderman McGee.
Hi.
Alderman Carr.
Hi.
Alderman Roll.
Hi.
Seven eyes.
There is under B, a motion for approval accounts payable dated October twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five. The amount of four hundred thirty three thousand nine hundred forty three dollars and fifteen cents is their motion. Most of all, the McGee is our second. Alderman Montoya on the question. But please do the roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Hi.
Alderman Montoya.
Hi.
Alderman Ruthenberg.
Hi.
Alderman Fairwell.
Hi.
Alderman McGee.
Hi.
Alderman Carr.
Hi.
Alderman Roll.
Alright.
Seven eyes, our honor.
There is, we'll come back to see. Bit openings for one business, seven thirteen Sacramento, one thirty seven oh one Sacramento, one thirty seven eleven Sacramento with three adjoining pins. Of vacant land that he's on for his ten years.
This is for one thirty seven oh one Sacramento.
Okay.
Well, for the city council of Blue Island, I. Patrick Cahill is representative of PJ Cahill, think one oh five five two Sussor. Which may go on, I'd like to bring a bid for just thirteen seven one Sacramento. In Blue Island. For one thousand five hundred dollars, we intend to use a property listed as a commercial space for storage. Instruction equipment for PJ Cahill, think. Maintain it with property of any degree, log dating, fencing, or on property security purposes. If you have any questions or need additional information, please do not hesitate.
Alright.
This one is for one thirty seven thirteen Sacramento.
All the same.
Yeah.
Then. Patrick Cahill, representative of PJ Cahill, one oh five five two Sussor, would like to put in for big purchase one three seven three Sacramento. For one thousand five hundred dollars. Same reasons intended use properties, version various ways of certain destruction equipment, to the third property being three month of plowing, fencing, or on property for security purposes.
This one is for one thirty seven eleven Sacramento.
That's the city council of Blue Island, I'm Patrick Cahill, representative of PJ Cahill, think, would like to put in bid first one three seven one one Sacramento. For one thousand.
Alright, sentence illegal for review and the following. Is there anything else?
Yes.
Alright. Under D, a resolution for the city of Long Island County, Illinois authorize an improvement proposal from Exxon Enterprise Incorporated for the purchase and installation of Exxon fleet three. In car camera system for police departments, if you have rules, is there a motion? Alderman Cars are second. Alderman McGee on the question. Alderman Fairmouths.
I just want a little clarification. There's some different language used. Sometimes it's called the renewal and sometimes it's called the purchase, so. I just find a little bit of what it is. Is this name?
Yeah.
Probably best to describe this. Currently, we use a different vendor for our in car systems that are dated. We have some that don't have any, so we won't, we're going with Exxon because the proprietary technology. They work with our body cams, they work with our tasers, everything activates together. This will be all be new purchased installations for it, but it is the now third agreement we'll have with Exxon. Because we have other other technologies, so I think that may where some of that came in. Because we are offering renewal with body cam. Taser or something.
There wasn't, I didn't see an attachment then. Is there a total amount of money that we are specifying?
So it's a little over twenty nine thousand dollars a year. About like three dollars per car per day or something like that. It's a hundred and forty seven thousand roughly for the five year creep. When the war two of them.
Alderman McGee has a question for my press.
I'm sorry. Publicly cars are currently equipped with public cars. And 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 release a quick call.
Yeah, so ever since we took over, we're kind of trying to do better fleet management. So we've come down to where we need sixteen fully marked patrol vehicles and that will support our patrol division, which are the ones to get the in car cameras. Of those sixteen, we have about eleven right now with functioning cameras. Three that have malfunctioning cameras that we're having a hard time getting back up and running and the remainder don't have the cameras at all.
Any other questions?
Is not the. It was from the last, from the bid and is that a question? That didn't seem like it. It's about that construction company. It's just equipment, right? They won't be food like, you know, the construction trash or garbage or anything of that nature.
We can have the attorney look into it, it's sewer and excavator company.
Yeah, I just didn't want, you know, making sure they just don't leave like a. A vacant land, you know.
So we'll have to. More specific use and ask for a.
Do we know it? Alright, back to Exxon, any other questions? But please do the roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Hi.
Alderman Montoya.
Hi.
Alderman Ruthenberg.
Hi.
Alderman Fairwell.
Hi.
Alderman McGee.
Hi.
Alderman Carr.
Hi.
Seven eyes, your honor.
There is, under E, a resolution of the city of Long Island County, Illinois.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Roll.
Hi.
Under E, a resolution for the city of Long Island County, Illinois authorize when approving the execution of a fourth amendment to the traffic signal maintenance agreement value between the city and need. It's for traffic signals, I believe. Their motion? Alderman Johnson, Alderman Montoya on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Hi.
Alderman Montoya.
Hi.
Alderman Ruthenberg.
Hi.
Alderman Fairwell.
Hi.
Alderman McGee.
Hi.
Alderman Carr.
Hi.
Alderman Roll.
Hi.
Seven eyes.
There is, the next four are all related, but I'll do them separately. It's the offer from the Cook County for zero interest bridge loan until the taxes comes out and the. Money is paid removed correct from the taxes as they come in. So the first one, I'll read the first one. It's ordinance authorizing issuance of tax law, taxing spation warrants and anticipation of the collection of taxes levied in the year twenty twenty four. By the city council of the city of Long County, Illinois for corporate purposes, directing the county treasurer and executive county collector of the county of Cook, Illinois. Deposit amounts collected from said tax directly into a fund held by a tax escrow agent and authorizing the sale of city warrants to the county of Cook, Illinois. These are all individual funds, but they're not listed in here. Administration, you don't know what the first one's for?
Well, it's for different levies.
I know I saw the packet, it was listed by the library.
So there's for the different libraries, so it's for corporate purposes.
I see and I missed it, yeah, corporate fund, okay. Or. Corporate.
Corporate, police, fire, then library.
Their motion? Alderman Montoya, second one, McGee on the question. Alderman Roll.
Do we speak to how these dollar amounts were derived? I understand that like many municipalities, we need to borrow to cover the gap, and I'm just wondering. How is the the amount to borrow determined?
Think the county tells us, but Mark won't go into detail.
I mean, it's it's based off of percentage of the taxes levied and collected.
Okay, so it's it's just literally for what we would have put.
What you would have expected.
Basically.
Any other questions? Now please do the roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Hi.
Alderman Montoya.
Hi.
Alderman Ruthenberg.
Hi.
Alderman Fairwell.
Hi.
Alderman McGee.
Hi.
Alderman Carr.
Hi.
Alderman Roll.
Alright.
Seven eyes.
There is, so next three without reading the entire thing. The next one is for the police protection purposes. Same language as before, is there a motion? Alderman Carr, second one, Alderman McGee on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Hi.
Alderman Montoya.
Hi.
Alderman Ruthenberg.
Hi.
Alderman Fairwell.
Hi.
Alderman McGee.
Hi.
Alderman Carr.
Hi.
Alderman Roll.
Hi.
Seven eyes.
There is the next one, same language for fire protection purposes, is there a motion? Most of all, the McGee, second one, Alderman Johnson on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alderman Johnson.
Hi.
Alderman Montoya.
Hi.
Alderman Ruthenberg.
Hi.
Alderman Fairwell.
Hi.
Alderman McGee.
Hi.
Alderman Carr.
Hi.
Alderman Roll.
Hi.
Seven eyes.
Motion carries. Last one, same language for library purposes. And as you know, and I'll say to the public, library is a branch of the city of Blue Island appointed by the mayor, but they're tied to our levy. So we have to do the legal motions for them, so that's why it's on here. Same language, except it's for the library, but is there a motion? Alderman Fairmouths, second one, Alderman Johnson on the question. But please do the, who else?
Johnson.
Hi.
Alderman Montoya.
Hi.
Alderman Ruthenberg.
Hi.
Alderman Fairwell.
Hi.
Alderman McGee.
Hi.
Alderman Carr.
Hi.
Alderman Roll.
Right.
Seven eyes.
There is. City clerk.
Scarecrows are almost all up and they will be judged soon. I will be contacting all the schools in Blue Island, so the children of Blue Island can vote. The Day of the Dead is this Saturday. We have right now, we changed it up a little bit. We have three Mexican bands. We have a Blue Island dance team. We have several vendors, we have an altar. We have a photo section. Eisenhower High School is doing an art exhibit and the teachers will be present. We have Mexican puppets and we have a Mexican art exhibit. We have a lot more, that's just some of the things we have. So it's from five to nine on Saturday, so hopefully you all can attend. The Blue Island Life Parade planning has begun. We can contact the clerk's office to take part in the parade, sponsor, or even be a vendor. The Chris Kringle Martin. You have any questions, please contact me or stop at my office in the seat. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Under city treasurer, and we did this before, these monies are not going directly through the city for the green alleys, but they want us to be aware of it and be okay with the amount spent. They don't want a motion or approval, they just want you guys being aware. The Green Alley is asking for another payment. Pay request number two for the Green Alley program. Again, money's not coming through us, but one of their things is to make sure it's in our minutes that this is being paid for. I believe without them here, public works in here, the alleys are depleted, they might have some punchless stuff. But I believe the green alleys for this season are done. As you know, we were awarded three more for next year, but that's going to be next year. Any questions regarding this, not a motion, it's just a document record. Alright, city attorney, you go ahead, exactly.
Right.
City administration.
I want to put a item before I get to this wonderful document here. Alderman Johnson, just to answer your question in regards to the vacant lot that we just, just took the bid for. Just because they want to bid for the process, you still have to go through the use process, you still have to go to the building department yourself and tell us what you're going to do with it. And then we'll still have plenty of opportunity for feedback before, you know, before anything happens there, right? So just admitting process is one part of it, but you still have to tell us what you're going to do with it and everything. So you have a, and I apologize, this is not the easiest to reach here in front of you, but I'm happy to grind electronic version, it's much easier to read. This represents the this year's. Best option, we believe, for our health insurance renewal. For twenty, for twenty twenty six. So Mark and I met, Mark Toss and I met with with our broker. Also, Mark provided some news articles, some homework that we've been looking into. Just to give a reflection of the the health insurance market is very difficult right now. And no one is doing particularly well in it. So while we were hopeful that we, you know, might be not dealing with too much of an increased cost this year, we are unfortunately looking at. Our best option still includes, will be, you know, some some hiked costs here. So this option, kind of probably the most important thing to pay attention to here is that we have four separate health care insurance plans that we offer our employees. We have a PPO, an HMO, an HSA, which is a health savings account, sort of a different method of doing your health insurance. And then we have a what's called a Blue Choice Select PPO, which is a Blue Cross specific product. That's a variation of a PPO. So what you're going to see is that depending on the which which program that our employees are enrolled into, they're going to be seen. With the exception of the HSA account, it's going to be seen anywhere from a six to twelve percent increase. I don't know what you sign up for, what your options are. It looks like some of the biggest hits on that are going to come, obviously with higher deductibles and with increased prescription drug costs. Again, this is, you know, across the world in terms of health insurance in the country right now. So we believe this is the best option, we're still kind of working through with Blue Cross, but if you have any more specific questions about it right now, I I'm happy to let Mark dig and do it a little bit deeper, since he likes to live in this world more than I do. But, you know, we, this is something that does affect our employees and it's going to affect everybody, our retirees as well. So this is what we're looking at, we want to make sure that everybody's fully aware. So that's all we have for.
Any questions of this, Alderman Fairmouth?
Just a, I kind of a general thing, I don't expect an answer at the moment, but just. When we're presented with whatever the final decision is. And there's a lot of pieces here, I understand that, but I'd like to just kind of see what are the kind of primary. Probably hits most of the people are going to. Based on what we do. I obviously, we have a city to run here, we don't need too much money, but at the same time, sure we're all. And everyone with this, we want to treat our folks as as well as we possibly plan. And it's unfortunate that we are in this environment, or this is what we had to deal with, or this, but anyway, I just couldn't handle it.
So we're going to work to translate, because obviously this is pretty technical stuff, right? We're trying to translate what the real world impact looks like. You know, it's like I said, when it boiled down to, you know, the difference between a twenty five hundred dollar, thirty five hundred dollar high, you know, you know, it's a ceiling on your deductible. No, that's a real thing, so and and was what the house of. No, that's a real thing, so, uh, um, and, and what, how some of those pres- prescription drug costs are going to, um, be calculated, what some of the out of pocket costs are going to increase. Uh, there's kind of no way around it, but we just wanted to, we'll, what we want people to be is eyes wide open as possible.
Okay, thank you. Oliver McCar.
Yeah, just to, to piggyback on this. I think, you know, in particular, we've been. Uh, approving loans, approving the undercontracts. Uh, you know, given this cost increase, I, I think, speaking for myself, it would just help. To see the financial background. So that we know we're prioritizing the right things. Uh. You know, I, I guess I'd like to know for sure that we cannot absorb the increased cost to make sure that people get the benefits that they need. So I guess that's, that's all I'm asking for, is just some context. Uh, to the extent we had anything provided.
Oliver McGee.
Um, this here just shows optional one, when you cross the blue shield a little bit, but then I, I do see here that, uh, United Health there also.
Yeah.
In that, the word format is, 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 is. Uh, United Health there in there, so.
Yeah, so there are a couple of things, um, um, I'm ha- happy to show you, like I said, I didn't want to. Give you stacks upon stacks of tiny print, right, so this is going to be most likely, uh, the, the, what, what the administrator, what, what the admin also ultimately recommends. That, 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 that we approve, um, so that's why I wanted to start with this, to see that this is where, uh, I can't tell you. We did consider what, what a move to United would be, uh, city's had Blue Cross Blue Shield for some time now, um, it's a heavy lift to chain providers, and so that factors in, and the savings. Were still in that twelve percent area without some of the dip in the, in the, uh, uh, in the PPO section, so, but. You, you, if, if, A, if you really want to dive into this stuff, please stop by Mark or I's office, we've got some binders about yay thick. That have foldouts that, and, and other scenarios and all the things, and like I said, the topic talk lines, a lot, a lot better than I can, but, um. You know, what we are doing, we're working on. Trying to find, because there's areas you can customize, some of these plans, we, the city of Blue Island has traditionally had a very customized plan, it's historically kind of what we inherited. Um, but that customized plan, it speaks back to how the city first adopted this, uh, Blue Cross plan, back before a lot of us were probably here, um. That, uh, that customized, customizing the plan gets very expensive. And it was getting more expensive, and so they're pushing us back towards more standardized plans, which will still have some customizable aspects to it, depending on, but, but the standardized plans are.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, I, I had my own business for my, virtually my entire life, so I always bought my own health insurance, which is truly a miserable experience to go through. Um, and, uh. And I had several different plans from several different providers. And costs aside, my experiences, my own individual experiences, that Blue Cross Blue Shield provides fantastic customer service, and it is very helpful. Uh, so, it's just a, they have longer agree.
From my personal experience.
Any other questions regarding this? Anything else, administration, that was just a fact, all right, we have a brief, all of the automatic announcements, reports, or comments, all in the roll.
Uh, yeah, I just want to mention that I, a newspaper article over the weekend, uh, concerning an offer for Forest View. Uh, so I just wanted to speak to that a little bit, um. Specifically, when it comes to private equity, where. Money is pooled for the sake of buying assets. Uh, it's drastically changed property markets in recent years. Forest View is one such example, where homes that people live in. Are treated as depreciating assets to be resold, or squeezed for all the remaining value. The rent stays the same, services and investments disappear. We, as a city, have faced this issue with private equity and asset ownership elsewhere as well. Like with the hospitals. And other retirements in town. I believe we have an opportunity, maybe even a responsibility, to ensure that access to housing. Uh, not just be affordable. But clean and safe and worth living. My ancestors came here as immigrants long ago, and my family has put down roots, where each generation has been freed to pursue the American dream. All the while. While generations of my family had those rights and privileges, others. Black folks, women, did not have that tone. Looking around us today, the American dream must seem to be almost completely out of reach. For many folks who have not benefited from that same generational stability. Let alone looking at how recent immigrants are being treated now. With mass agents abducting mothers and fathers, sons and daughters. From quiet neighborhoods. I do believe it is on us to find a new way to ensure in bold terms. And to extend it to all people. Who want to be part of a healthy and free community. And I think we do this. By looking out for the least privileged of us. As a community, because that is what community is about. Thank you.
You.
And all.
I'm sorry, if I just may add, I would like, I, I understand they have a presentation they'd like to give us, those who are making the offer, so. I'd like to ask that we add that to the next agenda, please.
All right. Oliver Johnson, sorry, man.
Yes, um. Wanted to just let everybody know that, uh, Friday is Halloween. And, uh, at the John Dean Reader Rec Center, there will be, uh, trunk and treat from four to seven. Also a movie, and of course, uh. Treats.
You. And there are all.
All right, very quick, I just want to say thank you to the public, everyone, everyone else that helped out with the trunk and treat event at, uh, Park District on, on Saturday. Um, it was, it's very, so, thank you to everyone that, uh, that's on the, should have.
Any other all? Now we have a one top brief executive, um. We need a whole executive, Oliver Fairwell, second Oliver Roll, on favor, say aye.
Aye.